Good morning, and welcome to the May 4th Santa Barbara County Planning Commission. Would you please rise for the flag, Slu.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
And David, would you do TV coverage and roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County in Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Diego Valley, San Maria and Orchid areas. We broadcast the Planning Commission hearings on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on CSB-TV's website, and it'll be available for download in a couple of days. Now for the roll call, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
And Chair Farini?
Here.
Thank you.
And Ms. Black, for the Agenda Status Report, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Today we have one item on our agenda, and we are ready to move forward with that item. You want me to move into the--
Yes, please.
-- roundtable session report? So, we will be meeting next week, May 11th, in Santa Maria, and as you can see, we have, I would say, a very long day before your commission. We have the continuation of Falcon Heights to consider findings for approval and conditions, Tier III winery, which I would characterize as an "as-built" with a little bit of development, and then two fairly substantial projects, the Orchid Hill project, which is the PCEC project, and the first hearing on the winery ordinance update. And I just wanted to let the Commission know that you'll be receiving that staff report before you leave today. We do not have the final EIR for the Commission's review yet, so you will not be receiving the final EIR. We've provided a link to the draft. I think we've provided access to the comments, although I'm not positive about that. We will be getting the final EIR out in the next few weeks, certainly before your next hearing, so we can talk about that when we actually have the hearing next week, but we needed to do a little bit more work on the EIR before we released that. We do think it's worthwhile to go ahead and still hear the winery ordinance next week. We weren't anticipating we would get through it in one hearing anyway, so I think it will work out fine. So then, your next normally scheduled hearing would have been May 25th, but you have canceled that meeting. So, the next meeting is on June 1st, and that will be in Santa Barbara. And as you can see, there are a number of permit items on that day, so I expect that to be a fairly long day, not quite as bad as May 11th, but it should be a fairly long day. Then, June 8th, your commission has canceled that hearing. June 22nd is a fourth, Fourth of Fifth Wednesday of the month, and so we don't have anything scheduled yet for that day, but that might be an appropriate time to continue your discussion of the winery ordinance. You may want to talk about whether or not you want to set that as a special hearing to discuss the winery ordinance. We have a hearing on June 29th. That meeting has been shifted to Santa Maria, so that's typically a Santa Barbara meeting, but it will be in Santa Maria because we have a number of items on that day that are more appropriately heard in Santa Maria. We are bringing the Shell Guadalupe Dunes Project back to your commission. You saw that quite some time ago, and a couple of appeals. July 6th, we talked about last meeting, and I know Commissioner Cooney is planning to be absent, said if we really needed to meet, perhaps he could come back early that day. And so, I wanted to maybe think about having the June 22nd meeting for the winery ordinance and canceling July 6th, if that would meet with the Commission's approval. We do have another hearing on July 13th, and you can see that that's in Santa Maria, and so far, we have one item scheduled for it. And it's kind of as far out as we go at this point. So, I guess, June 22nd as a potential continuance date for the winery ordinance is one issue to talk about, and maybe that's even too far out, I don't know. That might be something we want to think about and schedule when we have the hearing next week and you see where you're at, but you may want to consider July 6th and whether or not you want a hearing on that day.
Okay, shall we comment on that? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, those are separate issues, but we could tie them together today or in the future, but I don't think there's any doubt but that we'll need an extra hearing for the winery ordinance, so I'd like to move forward today and plan that date, the 22nd, if it turns out miraculously that we don't need it. We can always cancel it later.
So, Mr. Chair, I know you'll need a separate hearing, another hearing date for the winery ordinance, because as I indicated, you don't even have the proposed final EIR, so you'll most definitely need a separate hearing date. I just don't know if it needs to be quite that far out, or if we'll need it to be a bit sooner. So, we can plan for the 22nd at this point, so you keep your calendars open, and then next week, when we actually hear the winery ordinance, perhaps we can think about whether that seems like the right amount of time, or if you need more time or less time, and figure out a date. Does that sound--
So, everybody's calendar is clear for June 22nd? Just, yes? Okay, so I think that's agreeable up here. And then, July 6th, shall we go ahead and dispose of that?
I'll just make a motion to do that, to cancel that meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you have to do a roll call vote.
Do we? Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
And Chair Farini?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, very good. Public comment? Do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment on items not on the agenda today? Nothing here, Santa Maria? Nothing there?
Yeah, there's nobody here.
Okay, and then, a Planning Commissioner's informational report? Nothing, so on to Dr. Russell, please, with the Director's Report.
Good morning, Chair, Farini, Commissioners, pleasure to be here. The only hearing since your last hearing was yesterday, with two items of interest. One was the urban appeal of the Bonino single-family residents in the Mission Canyon area, and that was, appeal was denied unanimously by your commission, and the Board did the same. The other item was the, this year's zoning cleanup package with all sorts of different stuff in it that Noel brought forward, and that was all approved, but the Board had some discussion about the lot line adjustment change. Currently, a lot line adjustment cannot result in a substandard size lot, a non-conforming lot as to size. This would have added the requirement that it not result in a substandard, non-conforming lot as to lot width in a series of different zones. The Board felt that it would be worthwhile to talk about that a little bit, and that it was a significant enough issue to pull it out of the cleanup and bring it back sometime after the Board break, and so that's what we did. And that's all there is today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Dr. Russell, a little while ago, the appeal of the cell site on Kenneth Avenue, and you never gave us a resolution of that. I know what happened, but I wonder if you could just--
Well, this is, Chair Farini, Commissioner Brown, this is what I can tell you. I believe that they have to find a new site. I don't believe that the county is going to actually lease the county property.
Okay.
And so, that, General Services needs to communicate that to the applicant, and then the applicant will need to respond by either withdrawing their appeal or proposing another site, and I don't know exactly where that stands.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our standard agenda. David, would you read Item 1 in, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing under request of the Planning Development Department that the County Planning Commission consider case numbers 16 GPA 1, 16 RZN 1, and 16 ORD 1, recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution amending the Santa Barbara County Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map and ordinances amending the county zoning map Section 35-1 and ordinance number 661.
Okay, Ms. Metzger.
Good morning. I am here today to present on the Ordinance 661 Consistency Rezone Phase 2 Project. For the record, I am Jessica Metzger, Project Planner. The proposed rezone project is the second phase of a comprehensive effort started by the Board of Supervisors in 2005 to bring the remaining lands in the antiquated 661 zoning ordinance into the more current Land Use and Development Code, otherwise known as the LUDC. The Board initiated these changes to increase land use options available to the landowners, to streamline the permit process, reduce permit costs and time delays, and provide equitable treatment with respect to available uses to property owners. The 661 zoning ordinance was first adopted by the county back in the 1950s. In the 1980s, much of the 661 residential and commercial zoning was repealed and replaced by the new LUDC. At this point in time, rural lands were left in Ordinance 661. As time went by, and landowners wanted to develop their properties for any use not specifically listed in the 661 ordinance, they had to first get a rezone to the new LUDC zoning. The comprehensive zone change initiated by the Board will save the property owners the time and expense of processing their own zone changes. Phase 1 was completed in 2007, and rezoned properties in the Santa Maria Valley and the San Antonio Creek Rural Regions. The 661 lands were rezoned to comparable agricultural zone districts in the LUDC. Areas that were more residential in nature were put into existing rural neighborhood designations, also known as EDRNs. The first phase covered approximately 57,700 acres of the county. That concludes the background, and now I would like to discuss our current Phase 2. This slide denotes the extensive public outreach process for this project. To start out with, the Agriculture Advisory Committee had five volunteer members who formed a subcommittee to assist in the process. I noticed that one is in the audience today. This subcommittee, with staff and interested property owners, reviewed the 661 lands and made zoning recommendations. Staff sent multiple notices to all property owners of 661 lands, including noticing at the beginning of the process to form an interested parties email list to keep people up to date. The gold color on the timeline here shows our consensus-building meetings with the AAC Subcommittee and the public. Each of these meetings focused on a different area of the county. Next, staff held three public workshops that were also noticed by postcard to all owners. These meetings were an open forum where property owners could interact with staff and review proposed rezone options. After the proposed rezones were finalized, staff presented to the AAC as a whole. The AAC recommended the approval of the proposed changes. As you can see by this graphic, we are in the final stages of the project, denoted by the star. It is anticipated that if approved today, we would be before the Board of Supervisors in June of this year. Staff in the AAC Subcommittee applied the same rezoning criteria that was developed in Phase 1 to this phase. These criteria review the characteristics of the property, the topographic features, the existing comprehensive plan, and patterns of the zoning around the properties to find a comparable zone. There are three minimum parcel sizes dictated by the comprehensive plan for rural areas, 40, 100, and 320 acres. The majority of the properties in 661 have been proposed to change to Ag 240 or Ag 2100. These criteria set forth by the comprehensive plan also have staff review the existing 661 zoning and the existing LUDC zoning around the parcels. If there is cultivated agriculture, prime soils, or the property is smaller in size, it was most likely recommended to be Ag 240. Parcels without cultivated ag that have grazing or arranged land were typically recommended to be Ag 2100. Steep slopes and public lands were put into resource management. This is a map of the remaining outdated 661 zones, shown here in the green color for agriculture and the yellow in the South Coast for residential. As you can see, the 661 lands stretch from Cuyama Valley across the county to the Lompoc area. Approximately 780,000 acres of land are left in the 661 zoning. To give you a couple examples of the rezones, I would like to show you three areas here denoted with the stars, in Cuyama, Lompoc, and the San Marcos Pass area. In the Lompoc area here, the white on the map is lands that have already changed to the LUDC. The green color denotes the Ag 240, which has either prime soils or important farmland, and then, as you go up into the hills, you will see that it was more appropriate to do Ag 2100 for those larger parcels. Next is the Cuyama area. Once again, the darker green is proposed to go to Ag 240 due to the fact that it is an active cultivation and in the basin of the valley, and then, as you move up into the hills, it's proposed to go to Ag 2100 with those larger parcels. And then, the final example is in the San Marcos Pass area, where it was all zoned in 661 as 100 AG, and so is appropriate to go to Ag 2100. These are a few examples of the rezoning maps, which can be found on our website and in the staff report. Staff in the AAC Subcommittee also identified five EDRNs in the process. This EDRN boundary will be applied to the comprehensive plan maps. These are neighborhoods that are historically developed with smaller parcel sizes and surrounded by rural lands, often in agriculture. The EDRN boundary defines the neighborhood and protects the expansion and protects the agriculture that way. The EDRNs identified in the plan are shown here with stars, and we start out in the area of River Park by Lompoc here. The EDRN is the dark green here, smaller parcels that all had existing dwellings. And then, we move to the NoHoey Farms here. The EDRN is the teal-gray area here. And then, Campbell Road here, with the EDRN being the khaki color. And then, Pearl Road in Santa Maria, with the EDRN being the light yellow. And then, finally, in Cuyama, with the EDRN being this subdivision here. Through the process of proposing new zoning and creating the EDRNs, staff and the AAC Subcommittee and the active property owners concurred with the vast majority of the zoning recommendations for the 2,700 parcels in the project area that are included in your staff report. As discussed earlier on, one of the benefits to the changes is the expansion of allowed uses. This table demonstrates the additional allowed uses in the LUDC. P is for permitted, and the hyphen denotes that it's not allowed. On the left side of the screen, you can see that 661 has four agricultural zones with slightly different uses allowed in each. On the right are the two comparable LUDC zones, Ag 2 and Ag 1. It is important to note that there is no difference in the uses from Ag 2100 to Ag 240. The only difference is the density for subdividing. The land use table illustrates a significant amount of discretionary land uses that are no longer available to people in 661 lands, shown here in the yellow outline. Also identified in the project were some areas of the comprehensive plan maps that needed to be adjusted. The first is here in Ventucopa. You see with the yellow boundary here, where the area should be removed from the existing EDRN and not included due to the fact that it has agricultural 2100 and was actually through a consistency zone some years ago. The next two are adjustments to the urban boundary near Lompoc. Ag zoning, once again, is in the color and is not appropriate in the urban area, so the boundaries have been removed to exclude the ag zoning. And one more, the color here, and the boundary adjustment to the other side of the agricultural zone. The final portion of the project is to repeal the original text of Ordinance 661 that no longer has corresponding land associated with it. Just to illustrate how old the zoning district is, this is the original text adopted back in the 1950s and printed in the paper. And this is what zoning looks like today for Ordinance 661. Back in 1984, much of the ordinance was repealed, as we heard earlier, those commercial and residential districts. So, all that remain are the whites, and the repealed ordinance parts are the yellow. The county is also the lead agency for the preparation of the final negative declaration. The ND was circulated, and no significant impacts have been identified through the Staff requests that the recommendations be made following Page 2 of your staff report and included on this slide. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Metzger. Before we go to questions, I did forget to ask for ex parte and site visit disclosure. Okay. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Ms. Metzger, thank you. This is quite some project, and I think it's well done. Just a query on noticing, can you speak? Because this is a very big project, lots of county lands, lots of property owners, what your noticing was like, and how often you did it, or what you did? Can you just go over that a little bit, please?
Yes, through the Chair, Commissioner Brown. What we did at the very beginning of the project was we pulled from the assessor's database all of the properties that are currently in the 661 zone and sent postcards to everyone who was in that zone, informing them that we were starting this process and asking them to call me as staff, or to go to a website, which we had updated with information throughout the process, and sign up for an interested parties list, which would be in more frequent email than the postcards. And then, when we held the public workshops after our Subcommittee meetings, we had three public workshops, one in Santa Maria, one down here in Santa Barbara, and one in Cuyama. We also sent the same postcard to the new property owners, because the assessor updates their property list about every three months. And then, for this hearing, we did the same thing. You're welcome.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Farini. I'd like to get a little bit more background about the involvement of the Ag Advisory Committee. When I looked at the timeline, it's obviously, you know, they were very much involved, but I was, I didn't see that in the staff report. So, is there a public record of that? Or how, you know, if somebody had a question about this, you know, where would we send them to say, "Well, this did happen in these workshops. Were very helpful in the process"?
Yes, through the Chair, Commissioner Brooks. So, before we even sent that first notice, we went to the AAC as a whole and requested that people volunteer to be on the Subcommittee to look at basically the entire county parcel by parcel that was left in 661 and make recommendations for the new zone. So, as I said earlier, when we started that website, we kept an active record of each of those meetings. We had agendas, we had meeting material that was provided to the public that came to those, and also the AAC members committed or contributed to that. And so, the record is all on our website there, but we couldn't have done it without them. They were a really great group of volunteers, and it was a pleasure to work with them. You can tell that they have agricultural concerns at the top of their heart.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Metzger, I have just a question about the consistency rezone project overview map, which was at the end of your presentation, and the yellow zones in the South County, which are designated residential. So, is that a change from their existing zoning, or is that, why did you point out those areas as residential?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Cooney. The majority of the 661 remaining parcels were in agriculture, but there were two zones that were left out of the original Phase 1 that were residential. And so, for those two zones, we wanted to make sure that we weren't looking at them strictly for the protection of agriculture and the continuation of agriculture, since they had a residential zoning district. Does that answer your question?
Well, it's in the area of my question. Let me see. The areas that are proposed for rezoning are zoned how currently, those residential areas?
The zoning is AI for the area here, and RA, I believe, for the area here. So, residential agriculture and agriculture limited.
Okay. Thank you.
Pretty quiet this morning. Dan, did you have something?
Yes, I did. In the staff report, you've got all the parcels listed, and a couple of them have asterisks on the, the parcel, a couple of them have double asterisks, and I could find no key to tell me what that indicates.
Yes, through--
Give me an example. It's on Page 115.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Blau, those are, the key is at the very end of the list, the last page, and it denotes those areas where the urban boundary was going to change, or that area in Cuyama, where those two parcels are coming out of the existing EDRN. I'll try to make that clearer next time.
I looked at the last page, I didn't see any key, maybe I missed it, but I don't, nope. I think the last page is Page 174, and I see no key there.
I believe it's on Page 62, Commissioner Blau. Through the Chair.
Okay. Doesn't matter, you told me what it represents, so now I know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public comment. I don't see any speaker slips. We have an audience, anybody like to speak, please come up and then give us a speaker slip after, please.
For the sake of completeness, I'm going to be looking down here at the-
Could you give us your name?
My name is Philip Jankowski.
Thank you.
And I direct the Blue Sky Center, which is a nonprofit that's organized up in the Cuyama Valley outside of the townsite in New Cuyama. And so I'm just going to read a statement here for you, hope you can hear me. You know, the hearing this morning is pretty straightforward in terms of what the work that the county staff has done. We, you know, support the negative declaration, but just wanted to raise some issues of, issues and opportunities in the Cuyama Valley. The Blue Sky Center consists of 22,000 square feet of buildings, 4,000-foot private runway, and 300 acres of alluvial farmland. Excuse me, I'll move this up closer. Our objective is to provide an innovative rural destination to entrepreneurs, artists, architects, researchers, and agriculturists and educators to converge and utilize the center for advancing environmental sustainability through practice, the benefits of which we hope extend beyond the county. A few of our planned programs consist of Architectural Design Build Fellowship, Flagship Regenerative Farm, and Artist Maker and Entrepreneurial Startup Space. We have developed relationships with the major academic institutions, UC, excuse me, UCSB and Cal Poly, as well as our nonprofit environmental and philanthropic partners such as the Community Environmental Council, the AIA, and the U.S. Green Building Council, to name a few. The 661 consistency rezone doesn't really affect our parcel. However, I did want to highlight that there's some potential opportunities to empower and enable the rural unincorporated regions to really self-determine themselves and be a destination for places of innovation and experimentation. I've shared with the county staff some ordinances drafted in Marin County and Sonoma County that might be of note, and I just wanted to highlight a few of the limiting factors related more towards the land use development code. One is in the realm of severe shortage of housing and tight restrictions on new housing construction that prevents growth and improvements in the region as a destination that could be a benefit of new housing stock. I think that's something that we need to look into. The prohibited residential uses for our particular industrial commercial space currently prohibits the adaptive reuse of these commercial spaces for live-work arrangements for charitable purposes such as research fellowships or artist studios or rotating residency programs, things that would inject some life into the community. And then the narrow and outdated land use code doesn't really allow for kind of 21st century research applications that might be utilized out there at the facility such as composting toilets for groundwater research or regenerative farming research, carbon farming research. Now, I recognize these issues extend beyond the auspices of the County Planning Commission, but we met with all the board of supervisors, county staff, all the way up and down the chain. So I just want to offer my availability and meet, talk more about these issues in person, open a dialogue for potential public-private partnerships up there, and just explain in more detail what we have planned and shed some more light on the good things happening up there and commend the work that the county is already doing to help modernize the code. So thank you.
Thank you. Would you make sure you fill out a speaker slip? And Commissioner Brown has a question for you.
I have a question actually for staff, based upon his comments.
Okay.
I have actually a question for staff.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It almost sounds like what this gentleman is interested in is a long-range work program for this sustainable living research project. I'll just make that comment to, since I don't know what you're going to do with his comments or if you're thinking about it, but-
Commissioner Brown, through the chair. I would agree with you.
Yeah, okay.
And as you recall, in the work program, that was something that was added to the long-term future project list.
Right.
There's also efforts going on in the city of Guelita and the city of Santa Barbara that we'll be monitoring, and we will be bringing that item back in next year's work program.
I just hope that maybe he kind of knew that connection that was already in there.
And we have been coordinating together and will continue to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Seeing no other speaker slips, we'll close the public comment and move on to Commissioner questions.
Three right leg.
Oh, okay, yes, come on up. And then after you speak, please fill out a form and turn it in, please.
Well, my name is James Kotsebar and I'm co-owner of Chaotic Exotics Orchid Nursery. We're eight acres, a little over eight acres between Lompoc and Bulton and the Santa Rita Hills. And right now, we have been zoned Ag 100. They're eliminating that, or you are choosing to do away with that? And I was wondering if it's possible to subdivide. We have complete meters for everything, two double meters for gas, electric, water. It just seems logical to divide it into two properties. There's one house on it now. I called yesterday and they said, "Well, you've just been granted the right to build another home on your property," but a two-home property doesn't quite make sense. You know, subdivided makes more sense, and I'm just wondering if that will be allowable. They said that there was an issue because they don't want smaller parcels, but there are some two-acre parcels in the same street, in the same area. And, you know, we're neither the largest nor the smallest, and dividing us in half will still make us not the smallest. And I'm just wondering if that's a feasible thing that can happen, if we would be able to subdivide our property? Because it's mostly agricultural, it's in the wine region of the Santa Rita Hills. And it was a former Christmas tree farm, so it was set up for agriculture. We've operated our orchid nursery but not really used the land. And, you know, now it, you know, it just seems logical to grow the community by dividing that land and having another home available. Is that something that can happen?
I don't think that's a question you're going to get answered here today. Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, I think Jessica can respond to the commission if you'd like at the conclusion of public comment.
Okay.
So-
Okay, so are you done?
I'll get an answer from Jessica then.
No guarantees, but-
Oh, okay.
If you're done, you're, okay. Make sure you turn in a speaker slip, please. Thank you. Now we'll close the public comment, and then I'll ask the question, Ms. Metzger.
Chairman Commissioners, so this property is currently zoned in 661-100AG. It's one of the properties that we looked at with the AAC Subcommittee to form into an EDRN because it does have many existing dwellings. You can see it in this khaki color here, so we have proposed that it go down to Ag 110. Ag 110 is a 10-acre minimum lot size, and in Ag 110, you're also allowed a residential second unit, which he's not currently allowed in 661. That's what he was referring to about the two dwellings. But we did not look at, through this process, changing the zoning so more people across the county could subdivide. And already, he's going to the EDRN, which affords him more options than many people that are staying in Ag 2-100 or Ag 2-40.
How many acres is his parcel?
I believe it's eight. Is that?
Eight six.
Yeah. Eight point six one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, deliberations? How would you like to proceed?
I have a question, if I could.
Yes, Dan. Commissioner Blau.
I'm glad to hear that there was such great noticing for all the property owners, but my concern is, is how many parcels are we zoning that are now going to be illegal, non-conforming kind of deal? It's one of my pet peeves, I don't like to take a 20-acre piece and zone it Ag 200, or take Ag 2-100. So are there many that we're making non-conforming, or did we try and make them all conforming?
Through the chair, Commissioner Blau. We haven't calculated how many parcel size fall below what we are zoning them, but due to the fact that we really looked at doing comparable zones, they would be going from 100AG in 661 to 100. So they might have already been non-conforming in parcel size, and that's something we could do, that exercise with our GIS department.
Yes, Ms. Black.
If I could continue, well, I think if I looked through the list of parcels, I think I saw a lot of them that were 40 acres and now it's going to be Ag 2-100. Now, you don't actually give me the exact parcel size, you sort of give me a table that says what the uses are, but how many of the Ag 40s are going to Ag 100 is my question. And I think I saw one correspondence that was emailed to me yesterday, where there was some discussion about that.
Through the chair, Commissioner Blau. I do have a map of the Ferris property, Taras, I'm sorry, Taras property, if that would assist in our discussion. I can pull that up. So this is the area where that letter in question was written about. The Taras has owned two properties, this one here that's 107 acres and this one here that's 47 acres. As you can see on this map, all of the dark green is 661 land and it's zoned 100AG. And then the white, of course, like the other maps, is already in the land use development code, zoned Ag 2-100. They are requesting that this 47-acre parcel be given the designation of Ag 2-40 instead of Ag 2-100. Reviewing our criteria that we set up through this process, staff did not agree with that due to the fact that it would create an island of that Ag 2-40 surrounded by Ag 2-100 and would be considered spot zoning. Furthermore, Ag 2-100 versus Ag 2-40, the uses are exactly the same. So all you're allowing that person to do would be to subdivide, and so that 107-acre parcel could be subdivided into two.
Mr. Chair, I think Jessica said this, but I think the important thing here is, the parcel right now is zoned 100AG. So even if they wanted to try and subdivide under the current 661 zoning, they could not do so. So this one was a very straightforward translation from 100AG to Ag 2-100.
Commissioner Brooks?
Okay, we're going on then to other topics at this point, okay. I'd like to hear, we have 700, approximately 780,000 acres that's covered in today's action. And, you know, we have the environmental document, as far as, you know, I see it's going to work very much, I think, in helping agriculturalists, but then part of it is also, there will be approximately 450 new housing units. Could you just explain that and, you know, how that was dealt with in the environmental document? So, you know, people will want to say, "Well, is this going to be growth inducing? You know, are we saving, you know, agriculture here?" So I'd like to hear a little bit more about the housing units that now will be, let's say legalized, or the potential for the 450 housing units.
Through the chair, Commissioner Brooks. The first portion of those new housing units that are facilitated through this change have to do with 661 zoning that is currently in U or unlimited agriculture. The U zone in 661 does not allow any structure, any dwelling, to be built on a property less than 10 acres. In the LUDC zone, you're allowed to have a dwelling on any parcel that is valid as long as it meets other standards with development review. So 233 parcels exist in the U zone that are under 10 acres, so they would be allowed to apply for a dwelling. And so that was the first analysis in the negative declaration. The second is actually the example that I showed in Campbell Road. The EDRNs that were formed across the county that kind of pocketed those existing rural neighborhoods went down to a zoning district that would allow a residential second unit. So those zoning districts in the LUDC are Ag 1-5, Ag 110, and Ag 120. And so out of that, there was 213 parcels that could apply for a residential second unit. Once again, keeping in mind, they still have standards about that unit and the property size and where it can be situated that they would have to comply with. We didn't go and look on a parcel-by-parcel basis at that level because this is programmatic. And so total new units that could be facilitated through this change would be 446. Yet, they would still have to have services, they would still have to look at development review standards, so they're also spread out across the county and not in one area. The only area that they're really not in is the South Coast because the U zone and the EDRNs are more rural areas.
Commissioner Cooney.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I don't want to sound hasty about this, but to me, looking through the staff report and hearing the presentation today, this process started quite a long time ago and has been extensively reviewed in various fora, with the public, and I believe the lack of comment that we've heard from the public suggests that it is well-understood and generally to the advantage of everyone who's affected. So I'm prepared to approve this action to the extent we have recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. And I'm not sure if there is anything further to discuss up here, but more than willing to do that, but I'm ready to go forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I would support that as a second, and I would just like to make the additional comment that I see Mr. Van Leers in the audience today, he was a member of the AAC, he looked at this project over a substantial period of time, and to thank him and other members of the AAC who participated in that effort. And also to recognize staff, I think you did a really outstanding job. It's a very detailed, time-consuming effort to compile all this information and to work with the public, and I think you did a great job, so thank you. So I'm ready to support the project.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Farini. I too am ready to move forward on this. I did have two conversations with Ms. Metzger, and thank you so much for your time and all the explanations that you gave me. I see it as, you know, very much, you know, in favor, and it supports agriculture, and that is our number-one priority here, is to preserve agriculture. And I think, now that I know, you know, how much effort and time went in, you know, from the AAC, that made me feel much more comfortable with this. So I am also ready to move forward.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Cooney's motion.
Oh, can I make a comment?
Oh, Dan. Commissioner Blau, go ahead.
I'm going to go ahead and support the project. I wasn't planning on it when I first got here this morning based on the fact that I just abhor this idea of making a zone change to a parcel and making it non-conforming when it might have been conforming before. I also don't like non-conforming parcels. Seems to me that if we take the... I mean, for example, if it's an eight-acre parcel, I think the zoning should be an eight-acre parcel, so it's not legal non-conforming. Because, believe it or not, that does cause some problems occasionally when it comes to financing and other issues. Some lenders don't get it. But based on the fact you've not got anybody complaining about it or making comment about it, there's plenty of reasons to, other reasons to support this project. But I really wish we could not do that. In fact, it's a question for county council. I mean, if we... I think if we take that one parcel and zone it for a 40-acre parcel for the fact it's 47 acres, I think the logic behind that exists. You know, at some point in time, the zoning was changed on that, that made it non-conforming. Why would we want to do that? What's the benefit? I don't see that as being a spot zoning. If I'm taking an existing parcel and giving it that zone because it's that size created maybe 100 years ago, I don't believe that's spot zoning, but maybe I'm wrong.
So chair and commissioners, spot zoning is often defined as taking a small parcel that's restricted and giving it less rights than the surrounding property, or taking that parcel and giving it more rights than the surrounding property. And courts look unfavorably towards spot zoning. So although the commission has great discretion in legislative decisions, you are bound to make some uniform decisions in regards to zoning and try to avoid spot zoning where you can.
Then I'll make my final comment. I'm going to go ahead and support this, but I think what I'm going to do is communicate to my supervisor that I'm not happy with that, and he can decide for himself what he wants to give staff directions to change it. But I really do think we should be looking at that so we don't create non-conforming parcels. In fact, every opportunity we have to make them conforming, to change it, I think we should do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney.
So, Mr. Chair, just to formalize the motion, it would be to adopt the recommendations and procedures set forth for the commission on page two of its staff report dated May 4, 2016, including the findings in paragraph one, the recommendations to the board in paragraph two, and also the adoption, the resolution in attachment C, and so on, as set forth on page two.
And I'll just confirm my second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Okay, David, we're ready for roll call.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Chair Farini.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Meetings adjourned.
So, Mr. Chair, next week, I just want you to remember this meeting because next week will be long, so I just want you to remember this meeting next week. And I wanted to let the commission know your binders are ready, but you went so quickly that I don't think David has gotten the winery ordinance printed, so he will email it out and we'll send it to you if you'd like, but it's not a very long document, so I think it's probably email-able. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're adjourned.